I'm the order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Conway, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Crewson, eighteen present.
Our quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. As with the tradition of the Board of Aldermen, we have the Rosetta Kane Choir here with us today. And I know a couple of Aldermen were worried this morning when they didn't see them standing there when we walked in this morning. I said, "They ain't gonna be here." So with that, I'll turn it over to them to s- Let's give them another round of applause. That's incredible. And there's a green basket that was floating around. Feel free to donate because that helps them keep this going. And we indeed appreciate them coming every year and what they do here. It really warms your heart and gets you ready for Christmas, gets you ready for the holidays. And if that doesn't warm your heart, I don't know what will. I don't know what will. Introduction, round of guests, any introduction or round of guests? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, one of my constituents, Ms. Ann Danter, who's come down to enjoy proceedings today.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour, that's probably in the leisure room.
Alderman from the fourth.
Point shadows these are, but they're heavy. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest, the Ameren UE family, Ameren, Missouri, AT&amp;T, and Ms. Lisa McNichols. And I want all of us to stand and wish Lisa a happy birthday. Today is Lisa's birthday.
Happy birthday, Lisa. Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ironically, my guest today worked for the Street Department for twenty-six years, and Lisa is twenty-six years old today. That's truly amazing.
Yeah.
Quite coincidental. Tommy Garen worked for the Streets Department here. I think any of us that had the privilege and continue to have the privilege of serving on this August board, new Tommy is one of the guys that wrote it down and got it done the next day. So Tom, stand up and please be recognized.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to recognize as my special guest, Celeste Reader from the Realtors, Al from the firefighters, Gary from the painters, and David Holmes from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Alderwoman from the second, do you have some-
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I have as my special guest is Kurt Scobie, the Director of Public Utilities.
I like your new hairdo too, also Alderwoman. Great one. Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I would like to have as my special guest today, Donald Summers with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Steve Spreck with Communications, and Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize a couple of guests, Ms. Rhonda Smythe from Trailnet and Ms. Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, as we gather here on December 7th, which is one of the most solemn days in America, I'd like us to remember the folks who gave their lives that day so we might stand here. If you could give us a moment for that, then I'll introduce my guest if we could in a moment of silence.
Could everyone stand and join us in a moment of silence in remembrance?
Thank you, Mr. President, members. And if my special guest had been there that day with Mr. Garen, there would have been no surprise because they do not sleep. They stay up all night, all the time. My guest, Mr. Fred Stefan.
Alderman from the thirteenth. Alderman from the thirteenth. Alderman from the seventeenth, would you like to make the motion on approval of the minutes in absence of the Alderman? Alderman from the seventeenth, would you like to make the motion for the approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
We have dispensed with line items seven through ten, first reading of Board Bill.
Board Bill 257, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board, by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the Comptroller, the City Councilor, and the Director of Airports to enter into and execute and deliver a settlement agreement between the city and owner and operator of Lambert Airport and American Airlines, providing for a comprehensive resolution of all matters and controversies which are part of Americans Chapter 11 reorganization case and proceedings containing a severability clause. Board Bill 258, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance relating to parks, subject to the approval of the voters, and additional three sixteenths cent, sixteenth of one cent sales tax on all retail sales made in the city, containing interpretation clause, a severability clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 259, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance recommended by the Port Authority Commission of the city repealing ordinance 68909, which has authorized an operation to lease agreement and a lease agreement between the city and Grayseal Settlement House, and enacting a new ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into a lease agreement between the city and Great Rivers Greenway District for a certain land on the unimproved wharf. That's the extent of first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills 257 and 259, and to the Parks Committee, Board Bill 258, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize?
Pursuant to Rule 58, the Board of Aldermen, I move that we discharge Board Bill 172 from the Legislation Committee.
Has it been in committee for thirty days?
It was assigned to committee on September 28th.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth that we move to move Board Bill, which Board Bill was it?
Board Bill 172.
Board Bill 172, discharge, Board Bill number 172 from committee, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twenty-third. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, I'll just briefly describe the bill. Board Bill 172 is-
It's on just the motion for moving it out, why?
Okay.
Yeah, if there's no discussion on that, then I'll just take the vote.
Okay.
Then you can describe the bill when we discharge it from committee once it's on the floor. You can do that also. Yeah, Alderman from the eighth.
Yeah, and I mean, I read about this bill when it came in and that did we ask that the chairman that they have a hearing or schedule it or?
Am I, is the Alderman from the eighth asking that I yield the questions?
Alderman from the eighth, if you like-
I was asking the President or just the General Board of Aldermen, but it is a rather unique motion to do this at this time.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have not looked at the bill, don't know what it does, but I've been at this particular legislative process a few years, and I think it is ill-conceived and not a good idea to attempt to go around a system which sometimes works in your favor, sometimes doesn't, but when all the dust settles, it seems to work. So as a result of that, I would oppose the proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion, further discussion on the- Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The bill that we're talking about is in my committee. I have not held a hearing in my committee, and I have not told the Aldermen that I would not hear the bill. However, I haven't taken the opportunity at this time. I have, he called me this week, I've called him back twice, I get his voicemail, so there's been no discussion about this bill among other things that need to be discussed. So I would ask that you leave the bill where it is at this time until we can further discuss it. And this is a really unusual move to be made, and I don't feel that we should set the precedence.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth, would you like to have a quick discussion with Alderwoman from the seventh before we proceed?
I mean, I would just comment that Rule 58 is, we have these rules. The fact that we use some of the rules more than other others, there's a reason why we have all of them. And I don't think, you know, we should assume that if there's a rule in here that it's there, but we shouldn't use it. It's there for a reason, you know, this is the reason. There has been, there has been a meeting of the Legislation Committee since this bill was assigned to committee. I believe that meeting was last week. They considered a bill about campaign contributions, did not consider Board Bill 172. I think Board Bill 172 is a very common sense measure on conflict of interest at the Board of Aldermen. And in my opinion, it deserves a hearing, whether it's in the Legislation Committee, that would be, that'd be fine with me. But if it's not going to get a hearing in the Legislation Committee, I think it deserves a hearing here at the board, and we can, it's a pretty simple bill. It would be easy to talk about it here on the floor and at least give everybody a chance to consider and vote on it.
All right, I understand. Are you, before we move, before we move forward, I'm sure you and Alderwoman from the seventh wouldn't like to huddle for just a couple of minutes with the clerk and see if she is going to give you a hearing in a week or so. I mean, it's just a recommendation while we move on with the questions with Alderman. Alderwoman from the seventh, would you like to have a discussion with Alderman from the seventeen, with the twenty-fourth real quick? Alderman from the seventeenth, please proceed.
Just to comment, Mr. President, members of the board, as a chairman of a committee, there is frequently bills in my committee, and I'm sorry, but, you know, there's a lot of things going on down here, and I'm not always aware that they've been in there for that period of time, and unless somebody comes up and asks me, frequently I'm, you know, they sit in there until I hear about it. And I am in a great deal of sympathy with the Alderwoman from the seventh. And as a point of order, did someone second his motion?
Yes, it was seconded. By Alderman from the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
I would ask that the Alderman of the twenty-fourth talk to the Alderwoman of the seventh, aye. I would like to withdraw my second.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth. The Alderman from the twenty-third will withdraw his second if a discussion isn't had very quickly with Alderwoman from the seventh, which means that your motion will die on the floor. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize?
Oh, I just wanted to give a comment as well because I know that there've been occasions for me, and I try to do it out of habit. I always write a memo to the chairman of a committee and/or have a personal conversation. If there's a bill that I feel has some urgency or something, if not, we normally have time to get it on the agenda and get it through. So it's just a practice that I've had as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third, Alderman from the twi- Alderman from the twenty-third, you still have four. You recognize, they've had their discussion. Alderman from the, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, that you and Alderwoman from the twenties, from the seventh come to an agreement? Did you guys come?
The Alderman from the seventh indicated the bill would be heard in the Legislation Committee before the end of the session.
Okay, so she will hear the bill.
And then I remove my second.
The second has been removed from the motion. So right now, we have a motion on the floor. Do you want to remove your motion or you want to still pursue a second?
Well, I made the motion, I'll leave the motion on the floor. If there's no second, we can, we can stop talking about it.
Yes. I entertain a second on the motion to invoke Rule 58 to remove Board Bill 172 out of committee by the Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Hearing no second, the motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 256, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing Supplemental Appropriation, amending ordinance 69154, commonly referred to as the City Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year 2012 through 2013, appropriating $40,000 from excess payments on water bills and personal property, personal and real property tax bills received into the Heat Up St. Louis Fund, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Backstoppers, and the Pets, Spay and Neuter, and Microchip Assistance Fund, containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill 13, sponsored by Alderman Trup, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in City Block 4493-B, beginning at the King's Highway and extending to a point bounded by St. Louis Avenue, Euclid, Terry, and King's Highway. Board Bill 249, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on 1 from a 20-foot, 25-foot wide north-south alley in City Block 1740, bounded by Salisbury, North Florissant, Mallinckrodt, and 22nd Street. Number 2, Destra Hand from 23rd to 22nd Street. 3, Destra Hand from North Florissant West to the alley in City Block 1741. 4, Destra Hand from 22nd Street East to alley in City Block 1741, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 250, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel for, number 1, from Mallinckrodt from 25th Street Eastwardly to a point to the north, the southern north-south alley in City Block 1748, bounded by Salisbury, 23rd Street, Mallinckrodt, and 25th Street, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
Dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 222, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance establishing the Forest Park Southeast Special Business District, creating a Board of Commissioners and containing a severability effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill 223, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Forest Park Southeast Special Business District a proposal to renew and continue the levy on, levy tax on real property located in said district, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at an election on April the 2nd, 2013, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 224, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance establishing the Botanical Heights West Special Business District containing, creating the Board of Commissioners and containing a severability effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill 225, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Botanical Heights West Special Business District, a proposal to renew and continue the levy, tax levy on real property located in said district, submitting the said proposal to the voters of the said district at an election on April the 2nd, 2013, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 159, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of a sum of $3,100, a quitclaim deed to remind, release a forever quitclaim deed to the state.
Some more.
Certain city-owned property located in City Block 4879, known and numbered as 4354 Reared West Pappen Street. Board Bill 237, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance to amend the Section 14.08.220 of the Revised Code by repealing said section and enacting in lieu thereof a new section 14.08.220 relating to 3 a.m. closing permits and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 199, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from F Neighborhood Commercial District to the G Local Commercial and Office District for property at 5924 Clayton, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 230, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1218 Central Industrial Drive, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 243, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance dissolving the Special Allocation Fund for 4391 through 99 West Pine Boulevard redevelopment project area. Board Bill 244, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance amending ordinance 67314 by reducing the interest rate on city tax exempt, tax increment financing notes issued to Great Southern Bank for Warehouse of Fixtures Redevelopment Project and 4100 Forest Park Redevelopment Project, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 214, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4137 Manchester, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 215, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4225 through 29 Le Cleed, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 231, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 920 South Taylor and 4450 West Pappen, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 229, sponsored by Alderwoman Crewson and ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a Fourth Amendment to memorandum of agreement with the Bystate Development Agency for the purpose of authorizing said agency to issue refunding obligations payable and secured by a pledge of annual appropriation of the quarter cent sales tax levied by the city for public transportation purposes. Board Bill 242, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen, Alderwoman Crewson, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Florida, Alderman Cohn, Vaccaro, and Alderwoman Behringer, and ordinance pertaining to election requiring the disclosure of the donors to certain not-for-profit entities that make expenditures or contributions in support or opposition to a candidate for mayor, comptroller, president of the Board of Aldermen, or a city ballot measure. Board Bill 232, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller and the treasurer to enter into a grant, ground lease with option to purchase the South Grand Community Improvement District, granting authority to take such further actions as are necessary to effectuate the ground lease with an option to purchase and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 207, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3870 South Utah, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 208, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4158 Arsenal. Board Bill 228, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance recommended by and authorizing and directing the Board of Public Service to let contracts, purchase materials, equipment, and supplies employ, hire, employ labor, hire consultants, pay fees, salaries and wages to provide for building, facility, equipment improvements to the city water division to appropriate and pay the estimated cost of $5 million from the Water Works contingent account containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 179, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, Alderwoman- Board Bill 179 Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderwoman Young, Alderman Boyd, and Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance pertaining to the Excise Code containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 238 sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1706 through 28 Carroll Street redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 234 sponsored by Alderman Schmid, and ordinance authorizing and directing the fire chief to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to fund the 2011 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response project and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 155 sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to revoke the Deaconess Health System Community Unit Plan as indicated on the district map contingent upon acquisition of the identified properties by the St. Louis Zoo and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 240 sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance determining, determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 209 sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2625 South 11th Street containing a severability clause. Board Bill 210 sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving, approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 408 Councilman containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderwoman 13th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by the alderwoman 13th, second by the alderwoman 12th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We would dispense with line item 16, third reading consent calendar.
Board Bills 202, 203, 204, 205, 216, 219, 220, 227, 226, 198 floor substitute.
Alderwoman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by the alderwoman 13th, second by the alderwoman 15th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the road.
Alderman Troop, Alderman, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Troop, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, 24, I vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the alderman from the 13th and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill 109 floor substitute sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance amending the firefighter's retirement plan of the city of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the 13th, you recognize on third reading and final passage of Board Bill 109 floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Board Bill 109 floor substitute be placed on the informal calendar. We need 45 days after the actuarial study's been completed, and that won't be until next Friday. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Place Board Bill number 109 floor substitute on the third reading informal calendar.
So noted.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 202, 203, 204, 205, 216, 219, 220, 227, 226, 198 floor substitute.
All other business being suspended, the President shall an open session affix his signature heretofore to then that these may become law. I move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar. I entertain a second on the motion. Second by the alderwoman from the 25th. Any discussion?
Like to request that Resolution 189, which is the resolution celebrating the reopening of Central Library, be passed in bank.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 7th, second by the alderman from the... Somebody over there yells something.
Twenty-fifth.
I entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by the alderwoman from the 15th. Thanks, alderwoman from the 15th. Move by the alderwoman from the 7th, second by the alderwoman from the 15th, that Resolution number 189 be passed in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 190 sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and the Board of Aldermen approves the uniform signed standards for the South Downtown Redevelopment Area signage plan overlay district.
Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize on the first reading Resolution number 190.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I request that Resolution 190 go to the HUD's committee.
The alderwoman from the 7th made a motion that Resolution number 190 goes to HUD's committee. Then second by the alderwoman from the 9th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Sign it. We dispense with line item 22. Miss line is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Tuesday Housing Committee Meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday Public Safety Committee Meeting, 1:30 p.m. in the Leisure Room. Thursday Transportation and Commerce Committee, 1:00 p.m. in the Leisure Room. Friday Full Board Meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Chambers. Also on Friday is the Board of Aldermen Holiday Party from 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 3rd.
Reach 11 o'clock Thursday. We'll discuss and figure out where the money has gone that has been collected in the 50-50 sidewalk program by the Streets Department that has not yet been reported to the aldermen of each ward, who should be notified how much money has been returned on the 50-50 sidewalk program.
All right. Thank you. Any further, any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 15th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to invite everyone to come to South Grand on Saturday. We're celebrating Christmas with the Grinch at Mokabees from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. And Mokabees is at Arsenal and South Grant.
All right. Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First, let me take care of my in-house business because the lady who is responsible for the overall operations so that we have what we need when we need it, I want to say happy birthday to Lisa Nichols. Thank you for all you do. Secondly, I wanted to give recognition to the KDN Foundation. We have a nice picture on the front page of St. Louis American. They had a very successful program last Friday. As you know, Mr. William Guest, one of the PIPs, was there to support the program, assisted the youth in writing a song and producing a CD. We also had a photo exhibit that was done by the youth, which will be displayed in the City Hall Rotunda. So on your way out today, make sure that you see what these young people have created. We're very proud of that foundation, and we look forward to even better things coming from them. Also, to residents of the 19th Ward and anybody nearby, on December 15th, we're going to have a Winter Wonderland in Chambers Park. And Chambers Park is located at Delmar between Martin Luther King, I mean, between Martin Luther King and Delmar on Compton.
Some more.
So the, the Winter Wonderland is December 15th, and I don't care if it's snow. We're going to have fun. We're going to have music. We're going to dance. We're going to eat. We're going to toast marshmallows. We're going to have hay rides. I got my police fire motorcycle guys are going to come and give a ride on the motorcycles. We're going to have fun. Plus, at the end of the event, we will have a fireworks display. So I really want to invite everybody out. Thank you.
And they do stuff in grand style over in the 19th, so you, you got to be there. You got to be there. Alderwoman from the 14th, you recognize?
Yes, President Reed. I'd like to remind everybody today is Pearl Harbor Day, and I'd like to honor those residents of the city of St. Louis that served in World War II and defended our country.
All right. Thanks, Alderwoman. Let's give them a round of applause for everyone that... Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 16th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to remind people that in the 16th Ward is the famous Candy Cane Lane, which is the 6,500 block of Murdoch. And every year, it is packed with people from all over the region, people who come from out of town to visit their family. And even though people went and stole and cut wires this, this last week from that street, those neighbors have gone out and repaired and replaced everything that was taken down. So we invite everyone to come down to the 6,500 block of Murdoch, enjoy Candy Cane Lane. And for those who thought they would ruin it for the others, sorry, you won't. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Thanks, Alderwoman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Also, I just want to, you know, just remind everybody, you know, we, we normally do our, our employee appreciation picnic right when we come back in session, right? So this year, we were so covered up with all of the pension discussions, it was hard to get anyone's attention so that we can get that picnic put together. So we, this year, we did not do one for the employees. So what we're looking at doing is, right when we come back, right after the first of the year, let's do something for the employees. They really enjoy it. And as a small token from this Board of Aldermen, to show them that we indeed appreciate everything that they do each and every day. So right when we get back in session, if we can have something in City Hall for the employees, I think that they would really, really appreciate it. I know I've gotten calls and said, why didn't we have our picnic this year? It was very difficult because we were so much in the heat of discussion with the pension thing. So if anyone's interested in being involved in the planning of that, contact Mary Collins in my office and get on a committee so that we can plan it and really throw a nice event from the employees. Generally, the mayor's office joins in, so we're going to reach out to them to make sure that they're involved, the comptroller, anybody that wants to get involved, they should get involved. But again, this is from the Board of Aldermen, and this is our opportunity to show the employees that we really appreciate what they do for us. Alderwoman from the 13th, you recognize for the motion for excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the alderman from the 22nd Ward due to necessary absence.
Move by the alderwoman from 13th, second by the alderwoman from 11th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderwoman from 13th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10:00 a.m. December 14th.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from 13th, second by the alderwoman from 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. We stand adjourned.